Hello, good evening, everybody. If you want to speak on any items tonight or...
Welcome to the March 11, 2025 Milbury City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call for us, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Oliver?
President.
Mayor Feng?
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you are able. Please be seated, thank you very much. And we will begin today's council meeting with a ceremonial presentation and proclaiming March 5, 2025 as Equal Pay Day. And also, we have the American Association of University Women member, Gaetan Mariel Andrews, joining us today. Councilmember Nguyen, would you mind doing the honor?
Whereas Equal Pay Day was established to raise awareness of the persistence gender wage gap and the emphasis to the importance of achieving equal pay for equal work. And whereas Equal Pay Day symbolizes how far into the year a woman must work on average to earn what a man earned in the previous year, highlighting the need to continue efforts to close this disparity. And whereas, according to the San Mateo County, women earn about 81 cents on the dollar compared to men. These wage gaps are made even evident for mothers and women of color. And despite levels of education, research shows women still earn less than men over the course of lifetime. And whereas, the implications of lower pay extend beyond the individual, affecting opportunities of women who have fewer opportunities to access substantial capital to build a solid foundation for their future and generations to come. And whereas, eliminating the gender pay gap would significantly strengthen the economic security of working families, boost economic growth, and promote fairness in the workplace. And whereas, although women have made considerable progress towards equal pay, we still need to continue advocating for equitable pay and put it into execution. And whereas, we encourage everyone to acknowledge gender wage disparities and promote continuous advocacy to bridge the existing gaps, achieving equality for women in the workforce now. Therefore, we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim March 25, 2025 as Equal Pay Day.
Very well, thank you very much. And then we, Ms. Andrews is joining us, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, I never do this right, I'm sorry. I want to, well, you know, thank you for inviting me. And again, I'll say good evening to Manager Williams and also Mayor Feng and the council. And I'm glad to see Mr. Oliver here again, that's wonderful to see him. And I'm sure you'll do a good, you'll help out Milbury very well. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we do.
And I'd like to add just a few things, like, for instance, Presidential Proclamation, National Equal Pay Day. At a time when families across this country are struggling to make ends meet, National Equal Pay Day reminds us that achieving equal pay for equal work is not just a woman's issue, it is a family issue. And in today's world, women represent both powerful consumers and vital wage earners, and I believe that. Like I said, my name is Gaetan Mariel Andrews, and I've been in Milbury, a resident of Milbury since 1968. That's a long time, raised my children here and they go to school and now they have their own lives. And also, my husband served as a city councilman back in the 1990s. And so it's nice to be back to speak with you and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Would you like to join us for a photo? Thank you very much. And then followed by proclamation proclaiming March 25, 2025 as Greek Independence Days. And we also have Ms. Helen and Jasmine Sodaro from the owners of Dean's Produce accepting that today. And then Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Greek Independence Day is celebrated annually on March 25 to commemorate the start of the Greek Revolution of 1821. On March 25, 1821, the people of Greece declared their independence and liberty from the Ottoman Empire, which had occupied Greece for nearly 400 years. Whereas on that day, Bishop Germanos of Patras hoisted the Greek flag at the monastery of Hagia Lauda in setting the Peloponnese to rise up against their oppressors. And whereas, after many years of war with the reinforcements of Great Britain, France, and Russia, the people of Greece won their independence from the Ottoman Empire on September 14, 1829. Greece, the birthplace of democracy, was at liberty once again. Whereas the cry of freedom or death became the motto of the revolution and became forever immortalized on the Greek flag. Whereas Greek Independence Day embodies the symbol of victory and survival for all of those who are oppressed. In recognition of overcoming their oppressors, this day honors their victories by hosting parades, military demonstrations, and speeches. Across Greece, there are school-organized parades in which children march with the Greek flag while dressed in traditional costumes. Whereas the city of Milbury acknowledges Greek Independence Day and honors the heritage of more than 3 million Americans of Greek descent. Now therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim March 25, 2025 as Greek Independence Day.
Thank you so much. Would you like to have a few words for us?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Feng. On behalf of Dean's Produce, we are honored to accept the proclamation issued by the Milbury City Council officially honoring the 25th of March as Greek Independence Day. This holiday is important for many reasons in our history. The first being it symbolizes the hard-won freedom over 400 years of occupation and the celebration of Greek culture, history, and democracy. As a first and second generation children of Greek immigrants, we are grateful for this proclamation as it continues to recognize our Greek culture and generations are preserved and passed down traditions and our history in this country as well. Above all, we are honored as Dean's Produce to serve such a culturally rich, diverse, and wonderful community such as Milbury. Diversity and inclusion matter. And this proclamation symbolizes the importance of recognizing various cultures and community, not just Greek culture. Dean's has been in this community for over 20 years, and we look forward to continue serving this community and honoring everyone's traditions and cultures so that Milbury can continue to be so colorful and integral to all of our lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us today. Would you like to please join us for a photo, please? Okay, all right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide us with a City Manager update for the last two weeks?
Yes, good evening to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. So I had mentioned a summer camp fair for parents and children. So we had that last Friday. And just to update you, we had 125 families attend. We had 18 different contractors that we contract with for camps and different classes at the recreation center. So it was a very successful turnout. We've got great programs coming up this spring, throughout the summer, and next fall. For people that were not able to make it, you didn't have to be there to sign your kids up or sign yourself up for a class or an activity. But you can certainly visit our recreation website at the city's website. That address is bit.ly/milrec, M-I-L-R-E-C. You can also just go on our homepage and search around for the recreation site. But great turnout with 125 families attending. And so that brings us into the next slide, which is the Spring Break Camps that we're offering from March 31 through April 4, which is Milbury School District's Spring Break. We have an adventure camp for children 6 to 11 years of age. That's 8:30 to 4:00 PM all week. We also have champions tennis for ages 7 to 12. That's 9:00 AM to noon. We have a Communications Academy that's been a very successful program for ages 8 to 11, and that's 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And then an afternoon session, 12:30 to 3:00 PM. And then you can also sign up all day for the Communications Academy, 9 to 3:00 PM. So we've got a lot of options for parents during spring break for kids. We also have a very, very popular program with the kitchen that we have in the recreation center. It's a junior chef's program, ages 7 to 13. That's 9 to 4:00 PM. And then a national academy, it's ages 6 to 12, from 9 to 3. Again, these are just some of the examples of the classes that we're offering this spring break, March 31 through April 4. Again, people that are interested could contact the Recreation Department or log on to our website for more information. And also with great news, next slide, please. I know the council has worked hard in negotiating our solid waste management contract, and we were able to work with South City Scavenger to provide now at no charge drop-off at the Blue Line Transfer Station in South San Francisco, so residents can bring a range of items, antifreeze, batteries, e-waste, paints, mattresses, motor oil, and more, at no cost. It used to be a minimum of a $35 cost, and it went up from there. But with the contract with South City Scavenger, they're now offering this to Milbury residents for free. And you can log on to the South City Scavenger website for more information. We also, as part of that contract agreement, have a multi-family no-charge cleanup service. We currently have that for single-family homes, but now a multi-family no-charge for cleanup service has been added. It's available for properties from five units to 20 units. And again, like I said, this was previously only available for single-family homes, but allows up to two free cleanups per year, covering bulky items, waste, and small electronics. So again, mattresses, furniture, things of that nature. We do have to comply with all waste regulations, and onsite representatives are required for these multi-family uses of the property manager. And appointment scheduling is necessary, just like our single-family homes. But this is two great new services being offered at no charge for our residents. Next, just to, I think the council knows this, but for the benefit of the public, we have Tuesday, March 20, starting at 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, is the City Council's goal-setting meeting. So the City Council will hold a special meeting. It will be in the David J. Chakuti Community Room, and the council will review and update its strategic goals and priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. It is open to the public, so we do invite the public to come and participate. So goal-setting, March 20, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the David J. Chakuti Community Room. And then, as a follow-up to direction from the City Council, when we're talking about the Community Benefit District that we're looking at for our Central Business District and commercial areas within the downtown, we are planning on Wednesday, March 26, at 1:00 PM, a walking tour to discuss the Community Benefit District. We'll be meeting at the corner of Broadway and Taylor in front of Leonardo's Delicatessen and the new Bank of the Orient. And so anybody that's interested, mostly driven or mostly guided for downtown property owners, but other interested parties are welcome. A walking tour and discussion, the Community Benefit District, scheduled for Wednesday, March 26, at 1:00 PM. This time was what the downtown businesses preferred. So this particular time at 1 o'clock in the afternoon is the feedback we receive from businesses that would be most convenient for them to meet. And so that's why it's this date and time. So again, learn about the benefits of the Community Benefit District, review the management district plan. We'll welcome thoughts and discussion of what it is and how it operates, and hopefully engage, you know, property owners for discussion with city staff on this very important tool that we hope will be beneficial to the downtown. Next, we have our monthly Milbury Goes to the Movies, and that is next scheduled for April 11 at 6:30 PM. This is at the Milbury Recreation Center Great Hall. I think this is the last one before we open it up outdoors as the weather changes. So Friday, April 11, 6:30 PM, movie night out at the recreation center. And the movie is, there it is, Despicable Me 4. This is not an autobiography or documentary about a city manager. This is actually a very good movie. So we welcome all families and kids to attend our movie night out on April 11 at the recreation center. And I believe, Mayor, that provides a quick update of what's happening. But that, March 20, council goal is very important. And then also, the March 26, Community Benefit District Walking Tour with our downtown property owners at 1 o'clock.
And I was just going to get to the walking tour. Is there going to be a discussion afterwards?
Yeah, so the discussion will have a briefing, and then during the walking tour, questions and answers. And so during the walking tours, when we'll have the briefing and discussion of the district.
And New City America is spearheading this effort?
Correct, yeah. So New City America will be there. Andy Mogensen, our Community Development Director, our Planning Manager, myself, so we'll have plenty of staff there to answer questions.
Excellent, because I'm sure the community wants to find out what, you know, what this is all about. And also, the proper information can be distributed and be available to the public. The people needs to know what it is and what it isn't. And so all the questions can be answered with New City America and our city staff. So there's no misconceptions out there. So that's good. Thank you very much for the update. Anyone on the council have a question for City Manager? All right, seeing none. Moving on to the approval of minutes. And we have the regular meeting minutes of January 14, 2025, closed session meeting minutes, January 28, 2025, regular meeting minutes of January 28, February 11, and February 25 of 2025. Any council comments or discussions on these meeting minutes? Otherwise, I'll take a motion. We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi. Do you have a second? Go ahead and do a voice if the machine is not working.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a second from Councilmember Nguyen.
Motion to move forward.
Yes. All right, ready for your vote? There we go.
The five sets of minutes are approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. City Clerk, would you just... City Clerk, when you get a moment, just get the motion button, take a look at after the meeting. Thank you. All right, so when we have an oral report from the City Committee and Commission Chair today, I think tonight we have the adoptions of fiscal year 2025 and '27 and the Senior Advisory Committee were planned. City Manager, would you please? I believe we have our favorite, Rochelle Mullen, joining us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for meeting me here tonight. We're here to get the approval for the Senior Advisory Committee for the fiscal year 2025, 2027. Next. Our Senior Advisory Committee members are myself, Rochelle Mullen as Chair, Benita Gosh as our Vice Chair, Marlene McBride, Mary Ellen Pellegrini, Mimi Lee, Mimi Lynn, Patrick Cheng. And we do have an opening still for an alternate. So if you know of any seniors that would like to be involved in the Senior Advisory Committee, just let them know we're looking for somebody. Next slide, please. Okay, our review of what this past year. We supported staff in publishing and distributing the bi-monthly senior line, which grew out to several hundred people in the Milbury area. We formed a task force to create and complete the Age Friendly Action Plan for the City Council approval, which you will receive in two weeks for an approval. We enhanced a database to facilitate birthday wellness calls and sent monthly emails of matters concerning seniors. And Joanna Hafter, our liaison at the Rec Department, has been wonderful about sending out updates of what's out there for seniors. We received and disseminated information from various senior organizations, such as Self Help for the Elderly, Friendly Voices, San Mateo County Transit District, which included a senior mobility guide, the San Mateo County Older Adult Committee, and the AARP via the Milbury Senior Line. We supported monthly senior lunches, which we had this event today, Green for St. Patrick's Day, which grew in numbers, with the largest being 130 for our December 2024 gathering. And we've coordinated them quarterly with Self Help for the Elderly. Next slide, please. We participated in city events. We partnered with the San Mateo Daily Journal in hosting the Milbury Senior Showcase, which had well over 300 people attending from all over the county. We maintain senior stories every first Tuesday of the month. And now it includes a show and tell. People bring things from their families and themselves, which are fun to... And we supported recreation staff in selection of new programs, such as Bad Dad Jokes and Coffee. Men seem to like it because they've said everything was done with lots of women, but no men activities. It works, working well. We have Walking in Milbury, which is going to be starting up, I think, next month. And Movie Night, or Movie Day. And then we have Bingo Night, which is really popular with lots of people. And as long as you're 18 or older, you're okay to go. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, now our goals for the next two years. Task one, of course, is our ongoing advisory body to the City Council. As an ongoing activity, we serve as a recommending body for matters as defined in Resolution Number 16-37. Task two, we promote communication with senior community. We support staff in publishing and distributing bi-monthly senior line. We maintain a database of senior operations to facilitate monthly birthday and wellness calls, which are fun to do, and informational emails and distribution of matters concerning seniors. We facilitate outreach to bilingual citizens via communication. And we continue the senior stories program. We support the San Mateo Daily We support the San Mateo Daily Journal in the senior showcase annually by providing in the Millbury Recreation Center. The Senior Advisory Committee will hold a booth at the event this coming year to promote Millbury Recreation activities for seniors. Next slide, please. Task three, programs and fees. As an ongoing activity, we review and make recommendations to the Park and Recreation Commission and the recreation staff for review by the City Council for parks and recreation operation and programming. We work with recreation staff to maintain the success of senior luncheons as an ongoing monthly activity. And we allow up to four nonprofits a year who wish to present information to seniors, the use of rooms at the Millbury Recreation Center based on availability, except the Great Hall on weekends, after review and approval, after our approval. And we had, this last year, we had one on Alzheimer's, and that was really, really interesting. Next slide, please. Task four, build relationships with local senior organizations. We connect with local senior organizations to build relationships and increase communication and outreach within the senior community. We maintain relationship and provide support with Self Help for the Elderly, also investigate the feasibility of attending the San Mateo County Older Adults Committee. And I believe we have Zoom meeting with them next Wednesday. Task five, we participate in joint activities with the Youth Advisory Committee based on their work plan. Examples of joint programs will be to teach tech classes and trivia night, which we had this last year, and proud to say the seniors won. We work toward building a stronger relationship and sharing more information. Next slide, please. Task six, age-friendly certification. We continue collaboration with the City of Millbury and their various city departments, as well as the Millbury Library, to implement the Age Friendly Action Plan. And we reach out to CAFE, which is the Center for Age Friendly Excellence, to assist in implementing the plan. And as I said, in two weeks, they will be presenting the plan for the city. Next slide, please. And we hope that you approve of our work plan for the next two years.
All right. Thank you, Rochelle. Thank you so much. Just got some really exciting work planned for the next 24 months.
Yes.
And anyone on the council? Any questions, suggestions, and statement for our Senior Advisory Chair?
I brought it up at our last meeting. Lisi was there for the first time, and it was nice having her there. And I commented to her that we really appreciate the members of the City Council that come to our luncheons and other activities. It's nice to know that you're there to support the seniors. It really does make a difference. Wanted to say we really enjoy your participation of the city.
It's always one I thought to have. Anyone else? All right, go ahead. Councilmember Rinaldi.
Just want to thank you and the rest of the seniors that participate in these events. And it's been an absolute pleasure serving lunch to you folks. And I don't know if there's an RSVP necessary for Bingo Night, as I imagine that probably lines up pretty fast. So hopefully, the invite for City Council will be extended, too. It'd be a fun event to attend.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Contact the Rec people, and they'll sign you up.
Very well. Thank you so much, Rochelle. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for being here today, and I'm looking forward to see you next time. And happy belated international womanhood to all of you. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us today. I think we do need a motion to accept the report, City Council. Anyone have any questions? If not, we're entertained. Oh, we have a motion from Vice Mayor, and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Any final comment, discussions? Okay, can we have the vote? Then we need some, I think we need some.
Until it's green. There it goes. All right.
There we go. We need some training here.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the audience, this is new, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Renewed.
Item number four, which is Senior Advisory Committee Work Plan for fiscal year 2025 to 2027, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. Next up is the adoption of the fiscal year 25 to '27 for the Park Recreation Commission work plan. And I believe we have Commissioner Steve Henderson joining us today.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor Fong, and thank you to the rest of the City Council and staff, and for all your support and guidance as we go. I'm Steve Henderson. I'm the current Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Can we go to the, can we go to the next slide, please? Great. So I'm the Chair, and I want to say thanks, even though they're not here, to Vice Chair Stephanie Douglas, and to my other Commissioners, John Kiefer, Jordan Miranda, and Mary Tong. They really work hard to listen to the community and work in our role, so thanks to them. Also want to say special thanks to our City Council Liaison, Stephen Rinaldi, for participating in our meetings. He came on time, and so we look forward to his continued input with our group. Next slide, please. So, want to talk a little bit about our achievements from July 2023 to date. Commission has operated at full membership with no vacancies since September 2023. We participated in recommendations to City Council for field user agreement between the City of Millbury and the Millbury Elementary School District. And that joint use agreement between the MESD and City of Millbury for facilities and field use and athletic field maintenance was approved by the City Council on April 23, 2024. That was, it took a long time, it was a lot of effort, a lot of listening, but we did the right thing for the kids and for the community. Proud of that partnership. We have participated in discussions regarding pickleball at the Millbury Recreation Center, tennis and pickleball courts, which resulted in curtains being installed to help mitigate pickleball noise, and an adult drop-in pickleball program is being started at the Caroline Shay Center. So proud of those accomplishments. Next slide, please. Other achievements, we participated in planning and executing the Marina Vista Park renovation grand opening event on February 8, 2025. Lot of fun at that event. We made recommendations to City Council on the Bayside Manor Park project, which is upcoming. Also, we have continued participation in the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, BPAC. The city has been awarded three SMCTA grants, which include two 2024 pedestrian and bicycle cycle seven grants for the Millbury Spur Trail, Bay Trail Connections, $900,000 with a $100,000 match, and safe route intersection improvement at Magnolia Millbury, $675,000 with a 75K match. I want to say a special thank you to Public Works Director Sam Batista and our Public Works Engineers, who worked very hard recently on these grants. So thank you very much, Sam. So on to our 2025 to 2027 work plan goals. Task one, we serve as an advisory body to the City Council, and as an ongoing activity, serve as the recommending body for matters as defined in the municipal code. We keep abreast of current and emerging issues in parks and recreation. Right, please. Task two, so we're an active, sorry, we're an advisory body for the active transportation plan, and as an ongoing activity, we serve as a recommending body surrounding matters of dealing with bike and pedestrian safety on the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee. We work with the Millbury Public Works Department on recommendations for the SMCTA grant, in which the City of Millbury was a recipient of a grant of a, sorry, a grant for the Millbury Spur Trail, Bay Trail Connections, again, $900,000 with a 100K match. We continue to explore e-bike regulations, as that's a major concern for everybody in the city and for public safety. And we intend to participate in the bike rodeo. The Millbury Police Bureau are planning it for May 10, 2025, the bike rodeo. Next slide, please. Task three, programs and fees. So we annually review recreation programs on request by City Council and/or staff. We conduct an evaluation of parks and recreation programs and fees, provide consideration and recommendations to the City Council. Next slide. Task four, the review of capital improvement, our capital improvement plan, or CIP. We continue to review and make recommendations to the City Council regarding the capital improvement plan for parks and recreation facilities. CIP program recommendation requests are as follows. Develop a parks and facilities master plan. Two, the Mills Estate Park Restoration Project. Three, a lot of recent discussion about the top three recommended locations for off-leash pet areas. So there are three recommended locations, and those are the Monterey Linear Park, the Mills Estate Park, as part of their restoration project, and the SFPUC land close to the Millbury Educational School District Office by the pump house. So we're exploring making those into off-leash recreation areas for pets. Four, the Central Park Pathway. We're exploring the idea of adding lights so that as it becomes dusk and on in the evening or early morning, that there's safety on the pathway that many people use. Five, we're exploring shade for dugouts on the fields for the baseball program. Just had baseball opening day for the Millbury Lions baseball program, so there'll be 300 kids playing around the fields all the time. So we're going to explore opportunities to provide shade for dugouts on fields. Next slide, please. Task five, staff support and community enrichment. Provide support to parks and recreation staff in managing the prioritization of demand for limited park and recreation resources. Recommend and support staff in enhancing the city's parks, playgrounds, and other recreation facilities, including continuing to monitor and provide feedback on pickleball and tennis court usage. That issue has got a lot of attention, and we want to make sure that those people who want to play and enjoy those sports get a chance to do so. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that that works out in a fair and positive way. Next slide, please. Bayside Manor Park Grand Reopening and Ribbon Cutting Event. So our plan is to help the recreation staff to plan the grand reopening and ribbon cutting of the new park once it's completed, similar to what we just said at Marina Vista. We'll invite the Youth Advisory Committee, and perhaps the Senior Advisory Committee, if you're willing, to collaborate on the ribbon cutting activity. And so, well, we recommend that the City Council by motion adopt the fiscal years 2025 to 2027 Parks and Recreation Commission work plan. We hope you'll do so.
All right. Thank you so much for the update, Commissioner. Anyone on this council have questions and comments for Commissioner Henderson? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner. That was, I know you have a lot on your plate for the upcoming year. Just wanted to mention, there are a couple of projects that I'm aware of that are sort of being spearheaded by other committees. One is the Japanese Garden Project, and they're both sort of in the conceptual phase at this time. Nothing's been approved yet. One is a Japanese garden project along the spur trail over by, near the skate park, and another one is sort of an enhancement project on the spur trail between Hillcrest and Taylor. So I'm curious if those are items that your commission is aware of, and I think probably be a good idea to have, before those are formally approved, have your commission be able to weigh in and give some feedback.
As of yet, we have not discussed those two, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity. Hannah, are you familiar? We haven't raised it formally, but I'm sure it's in the works. Did I miss anything?
Maybe I could, so Vice Mayor and Mayor and Council, so we will be including at the right time. It's just very, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor, conceptual right now. We're working through some things, and when we're ready, we'll be presenting it to Park and Recreation Commission for feedback.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for the heads up, though, for the advance notice. We'll be looking. Now I'm ready. I, I mean, I tell you what, right?
All right. Anyone else?
And just to, you know, those were both brought up at public meetings of other committees. There's nothing privileged or confidential.
Looking forward to having some input. That'll be great.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thanks, Mayor Fong. Just a real quick kudos to all the folks that made opening day for Little League possible. Wouldn't be able to do it without CCFD. What an amazing sight going over there and watching the ladder with the flag hanging. All the parents and kids that participated, of course, the Millbury Lions, who served a lot of people that day, and wonderful folks that helped out to facilitate it as well, and the sheriffs, too. So wonderful day for all those that were able to attend, and absolutely amazing seeing all those kids enjoy the field. Brought back a lot of memories that, for me, 30-plus years ago on that same field plan. So kudos to that. And one last thing I wanted to wrap up with, I'm extremely pleased with this commission and the work you folks have accomplished over the year. Safe routes to school. I've been able to sit in on some of those meetings. They're in the planning phase of what to do with those grants, and it's absolutely amazing at the grants you folks have been able to receive and that are going to help these students be able to travel safely to school with alternate routes of transportation. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Nguyen?
I noticed that you talked about pickleball. So I, myself being a tennis player, have challenges getting the court. So I wondered what the plan is to balance out the needs between tennis players and pickleball players.
Well, we've been listening very closely, and we have a plan in place, and that was really a big part of our last meeting. I'm going to let Hannah step up and kind of explain where that process is right now.
I'd help out if there are some questions you wanted me to. Yeah, so that is an ongoing discussion at our Parks and Recreation Commission meetings. It's been on the agenda a few times, gone off and come back. And so we are continuing to work through the shared court, which is specifically Court Two, which is in the middle. For tennis players, there are limited hours for pickleball players currently, and so continuing to navigate that. Of course, Court Number Three is always set for tennis. There's no pickleball lines on there. And so, yeah, we're continuing to educate people, too, on different places that they can play. And we, as mentioned, have opened up a evening pickleball drop-in at the Caroline Shay Center as well. So hopefully, we're spreading some of the tennis and pickleball players around to give more time for everybody.
That's great to hear. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I added that, Hannah, so just for public information, the high school district is also doing a better job in opening up tennis courts. We've been in communication with them, and we're seeing that progress. So Millbury residents can play tennis on the weekends and the evenings at both Mills and Cappuccino High School. So that's an alternative.
I was actually, thank you for bringing it up. It's fantastic to know that that access is there. I mean, it's our tax dollars in those schools, and so if you want to play tennis, you ought to be able to get on those courts, and they ought to be available. So that's great news to hear that, and take some pressure off of court usage for everyone. some pressure off of court usage for everyone.
Great, yeah. Anything else? Councilmember Nguyen. Okay, thank you. I have one question. I think it's on your work plan to work on the Mills Estate Park, and I've just tried to get some ideas on timeline and plans for work, as I believe, you know, right about four or five years ago, there were some discussions about, you know, what to do with the park. There's been some community outreach, I think there's some survey being sent out. Just trying to, you know, get my hand around it as to, you know, what's the next step forward here.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
You know, but so the next step will be, as we prepare for our capital improvement program and budget for this upcoming fiscal year, that will be included.
Okay.
And what that is, Mayor, Council, is an RFP for the design, community engagement, and going through all of the planning, and as our development is occurring and we're collecting development impact fees, we have that funding source to add capacity to accommodate the new population.
Correct.
And this, this is part of that, that goal.
Perfect, yeah, because we do have, you know, four hundred units just moved in, and what about eighty-five, ninety percent occupancy? I think the population there is, based in sixteen, is about, what, six, seven hundred people, roughly?
Yeah, that is correct, Mayor.
So, you know, with that added population.
Right, we are, and we are limited in terms of field space originally in, in the first place, so I know that developers have an obligation to either include additional park space by the number of residents and/or pay a fine, and so I know that that, we've been exploring. I remember those conversations several years ago about what we were gonna do with Mills Estate Parks. If I had to put a finger on it, I'd say we're a couple of years out from being able to really set a hard date on when it's gonna be done, but the fact that the conversations are, are happening and there's awareness around it, given all the development, is, is wonderful to see, because years ago, it was just a discussion that kind of fell apart, so I like to see, I'm glad about that progress.
Okay, right, so it's nice to know, this is in the work. Nobody argues with having more parks, which is a good thing, so, all right, thank you so much. Oh, I think we have a public comment that we need to take. City Clerk, would you please?
Speaker and Snyder, please accept the mute.
Hi, thank you, thank you, I didn't expect to be called. I think the Park and Rec Work Plan is really great. There are two things that it would be lovely to have the city continue to work on. One is to try to get an aquatics program. I recently spoke with Mayor Rico Medina in San Bruno. I know they will let us use their new pools, but at the resident rate, which is very expensive. We do have two high schools in Millbrae, I discount the Cappuccino-San Bruno, since to me, it's Millbrae, but they both have brand-new pools, or almost brand-new pools. We could be working with them or back with Meadows, we're one vote short of getting an agreement with Meadow Swim Club, so that the public here in Millbrae would have access to water aerobics, lap swim, and play, as well as swim lessons. And the other item that I did not see under bike pedestrian, MTC, Metropolitan Transit Commission, published their final report on the Bay Trail and Lucky Millbrae, our Bay Trail is along the railroad tracks. If you read the fine print, it's because to give us a decent trail is so much more work. So I hope that the Millbrae Bike Pedestrian Committee will put the Bay Trail as a standing item on their agenda and keep working for a Bay Trail for what the people of Millbrae deserve, which is to be along the frontage road and access to nature. Great job, Park and Rec, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. All right, I believe that concludes public comment on this item.
That's correct, Mayor.
All right, any further questions and comments and suggestions for our Park and Rec Commission? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to accept the report and their fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-seven work plan. We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi, and we have a second from Vice Mayor Hollibur. Your votes, please.
The Parks and Rec Recreation Commission Work Plan for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five to Twenty Twenty-Seven passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll see you in meetings.
Remember, it's time to register, shameless plug, for the, for the rec center, it's up season, so registration is open. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us. All right, so that wraps up this particular item, and moving on to public communication. This is the portion of the agenda that is reserved for those who wish to comment on item not appearing on tonight's agenda. Our first speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have three minutes. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council member nor the public. We will start with in-chamber speaker, and then we will move on to online speaker after. We start with Joaquin Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, members of the public, and my name is Joaquin Jimenez, and I'm here to talk about democracy. You know, today, just by chance, you know, we heard two proclamations, one to celebrate Women's International Month, and then also we talked about democracy. In our county, San Mateo County, last month, I mean, last week, March fourth, to be exact, we were given a test about democracy. You're familiar with that, two of your councilors were recalled, if I, if I remember correctly. We have an elected official, the way to remove them from their position is to do a recall, a vote from the public, from the, from the people, from a community. Sheriff Christina Corpus, the recall, county supervisors, special election, five point five million dollars of special election, where does democracy on that? For them to have the power to remove Christina Corpus from her position. Do you believe in democracy? Do you agree with our constitution about our democracy to be able to vote for elected officials? She was elected by the people. She was not appointed by anybody. She was not hired for the job. She actually was part of, she was, I believe she was the chief in, in Millbrae, so you know her work. She is a member of our community. In Half Moon Bay, she participated, Fourth of July Parade, Pride Parade, broad gift for the children of the farm workers was present, has been present. Now think about democracy. Twenty percent of San Mateo County came out to vote. Twenty percent, with eighty-seven percent approving Measure A. Is that democracy? Twenty percent of our population will make the, a decision for a hundred percent of our population? That's not democracy. Please understand that we do have, you know, a celebration about having the first Latina woman of color elected in the history of San Mateo County for the position Sheriff of San Mateo County. Recall, grand jury investigation. Name is Joaquin Jimenez, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Next speaker is John Lambert.
Hello, City Council, my name is John Lambert, and I would like to discuss the enforcement of the state law regarding parking within twenty feet of a crosswalk, also known as the daylighting law. While I understand that the current focus is on educating the public within Millbrae, I believe the city should take further action. Ideally, I would love to see every curb in the city marked red within twenty feet of a crosswalk to enhance visibility both for pedestrians and drivers. However, I realize that this will be challenging due to resource constraints and other priorities. I would like to highlight a more cost-effective approach that I previously suggested during the mayor's listening session earlier this year, which I greatly appreciate, and would have shared with Councilmember Riley's listening session earlier this year also, but it was away that weekend on behalf of Millbrae CERT for training. My recommendation is that curbs at intersections on school routes should be painted red if they're not already. Foster City is implementing a similar initiative prioritizing school routes, which were designated in conjunction with the Skate South or the Safe School Routes Program, and their plan is to paint the intersections within their entire city within the next three years. I acknowledge that the council has secured grant funding for route improvements to Greenhill Schools, which is much needed and appreciated. However, I urge you to include red marking the curbs at crosswalks in your planning to prioritize pedestrian safety. I spoke into many fellow Millbrae parents who have genuine concern for their children and themselves not being seen by drivers at some of our dangerous intersections as they walk to school. I know more parents and students would be likely to walk to school if their safety concerns were reduced. As a parent who has been nearly hit multiple times while crossing within a crosswalk with my kindergartner on the way to school, from our home on Millbrae Avenue to Greenhill School, I know that my fellow parents, pedestrians, and I would greatly increase, appreciate the increased visibility. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. City Clerk, would you please move on to online speaker, please?
Next speaker is Ann Snyder, please accept the mute.
Thank you, thank you, City Council. Two quick updates. Number one, currently right now, UC Davis conducts an annual symposium on noise and emissions. It, with all the changes with the SFO Roundtable Meeting, there are no elected officials that I can tell that are there. Today, were three different sessions using SFO Airport, all showing a map that does not show any noise impacts in Millbrae at all. I strongly, I asked for this when I was a council member, I asked for this when I was mayor. It is time to have a town hall meeting for the people of Millbrae to talk about the specific issues to, related to airport noise, and the fact that the county of San Mateo has allowed San Francisco, the city and county, to do all of the planning for airport expansion. It doesn't come through San Mateo County, and San Mateo County has at least six direct revenue streams from airport operations. So it is good for them to grow the airport where it is bad for us. So I am asking, and Councilwoman Rinaldi, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to call you today and ask for your help in putting together a town hall, I'm here to help with that on my nine years of working on roundtable issues. The other issue, I was not able to go to the Board of Supes today, where they talked about Measure K. I did see they've got nineteen million for housing, I believe La Quinta is not on the list. Supervisor Spear wrote to me and said she does not support La Quinta, but I still do not believe they put the letter that we requested on the agenda to officially pull La Quinta and all Millbrae hotels out of any project home keys in the future. So just giving you an FYI to keep an eye on that one. Thank you, good luck tonight.
Thank you for the comment. I believe this conclude public communication tonight.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to consent calendar, item number five, approval of street closure on three hundred blocks of Broadway for Beats, Brews &amp; Vines on Broadway, August twenty-first, September eighteen, and October sixteen, twenty twenty-five. And item number six, approval of the fee used at Central Park and fee waiver for the Spring Festival on April nineteen, twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any item, would like to have any item pulled from the consent calendar? Any public comments?
No public comment.
Okay, I'd be happy to entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Nguyen, and a second from Vice Mayor Hollibur. Any final comment? Your votes, please.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing tonight, this is item number seven, from the previous continuance on public hearing to consider the issuance of bond by the California Municipal Finance Authority in support of a qualified residential project at thirteen oh one Broadway. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Andy Mogensen, for the staff presentation, and we also have our city attorney here for any follow-up questions you may have.
Okay, and then if there's no changes from the previous presentation, we can just re-brief on those and then move on to public comment afterwards.
Yeah, I can certainly forego the presentation if you wish, Mayor.
Sure.
It's obviously the desire of the city council, my recommendation is to hear the, the brief presentation.
Sure, we'll make it brief, and then.
Go fast.
Yep.
Next slide, please. So as you said, the item has been continued, this is a bond hearing in support of a ninety-seven unit affordable housing project at thirteen oh one Broadway that was previously entitled on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. The state of California has awarded the bond allocation, the project's application is approved by the California Municipal Finance Association. We have Anthony Stubbs, financial advisor from the CMFA here this evening. We also have Alexis Gavorgian from AMG and Associates, who were the applicants for the project. The purpose of this bond hearing is to inform the public of the CMFA's intent to issue the bonds allocated by the state, and consideration is limited to the council's authorization of the issuance of bonds within its jurisdiction. Again, that's, it's limited to the council's authorization of the issuance of bonds within this jurisdiction. The council is not considering whether to approve or deny the project, it is only deciding whether to approve CMFA's issuance of EFR bonds. Next slide. And these slides are consist, this is consistent from what we had before, the developer applied through the CMFA, the state has awarded the issuance of tax-exempt financing in the amount of eighty-five million dollars. The proceeds used to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, equipping of the project. Holding a bond hearing provides members of the community with the opportunity to speak of, in favor or against, the use of tax-exempt bonds for financing of the project within the municipal jurisdiction of Millbrae. Next slide. And again, I've, I've said this before, in our prior meetings, the debt to be issued by the CMFA is the sole responsibility of the borrower, there's no obligation or responsibility to the city with regards to repayment, the city bears no cost in the issuance of the debt, it does not have any bearing on the city's debt limit or credit rating, the CMFA shares a portion of the issuance fee with the city. And one new item, the city did receive two items of late correspondence, actually, we received a third item this evening, five fifteen, from the Carpenters Union as well, so there are three, three items of correspondence. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and as I said, we have the, our two representatives here as well from the CMFA and AMG.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mogensen. Any comments or questions from this council? None? Okay, well, seeing none, we can go to public comment. Does the applicant would like to address the council at all? It's up to you, it's your choice. Okay, all right, we'll do the public comment. Perfect, we'll do public comment, and we can give you an opportunity to redirect after. All right, so we'll start with Nels Delander.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Nels Delander, I'm Representative Carpers Local Two Seventeen of San Mateo County. I'm sad to say AMG and Associates have not come to understanding with us. They feel it's better use of the time to have their lawyers and other organizations send out letters to urge you not to approve these tax-free bonds they think they deserve. On the record, we're not telling anyone to kill this project. For everyone to understand this project is already approved, the bonds are going to be theirs no matter what we vote on. They simply don't feel the need to pay taxes on them. Why are they getting tax-free bonds while having community pay more tax dollars for healthcare that the contractors will not give access to? That's mind-blowing. Reason why AMG and Associates doesn't feel the need to acquire a general contractor to provide healthcare, forfeit wages of workers is all about greed. The tax-free perk of the bonds are on the line. They will tell you anything they can just to get you to approve the bonds tonight. Why is it hard for them to take care of the workforce? I'm trying to be a voice for these people that have families to provide for. Find a common ground with us and include healthcare and family-supporting wages for all the workers on the project. Only thing I'm getting out of this is trying to help the working class have a better life. That's what the public benefit of these bonds, if we sub, where does it depend? That's what the public benefit of these bonds, where does the public benefit of these bonds if we sub to the people that work here with too low wages with no access to healthcare? It makes the affordable housing crisis even more needed as developers and contractors push downward pressure on labor standards. Houses uplifting construction workers in Millbrae. They don't want to understand that the workers deserve better. And for that, I'm asking you not to vote, to vote no on the tax breaks. They don't care for the construction workers. It's all about profits for them. Another option is to put this on the ballot to let the community decide if they deserve the bonds to be tax-free. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Next speaker, Harvey McKeon.
Hello, my name is Harvey McKeon. I'm from the NorCal Carpenters Union. I really want to thank the city council for postponing this vote twice already. And, you know, just to be clear about the reason for that, it was so that we could have dialogue between our organization and the project developer. And to be clear, our organization, the NorCal Carpenters Union, is the largest organized voice in the NorCal construction industry, advocating for workers across eleven different crafts. For this tax break to be granted, we wanted at least some insurance that workers on this project, whether union or non-union, will not have to rely on taxpayer-funded programs. If you want a tax break, don't have working conditions that burden the taxpayer. Simple. Instead, we haven't received that assurance, and there's just simply this demand for a tax break. A meeting communicated to the city to have been scheduled with us yesterday never was scheduled. First we heard of it was actually when we looked at the agenda materials for today. And in the meantime, the city has been subject to legal intimidation tactics that falsely conflate the city's legal responsibilities regarding housing production and entitlement procedures, which they've fulfilled commendably with the city's separate broad democratic discretion to grant a significant tax break to a for-profit developer. The laws cited in letters received by the city largely concern project approval and entitlement. And as I've said, this project's already been entitled, so council's fulfilled that duty. The laws certainly do not require localities to take extra steps to afford preferential funding for any project. And to help support the demands for the tax break, the Council for Millbrae Broadway Pacific Associates also asserted that it's a given that without Tefra approval, the project will be rendered financially infeasible. We call on the city to scrutinize this claim because we haven't seen any comprehensive evidence for that, that we can identify. In any case, as I said, if workers were protected from relying on what are already very heavily overburdened social safety nets systems, then we could support a tax break. But we're not seeing that. And ultimately, I would remind you, I'd remind the city that if they're torn on this matter, the Carpenters Union wants to remind you that it's definitely a legal option to allow the local electorate to actually vote on this. That's in the Tefra regulations, and Carpenter's Local Two Seventeen has confidence that if that was to occur, the people of this city would stand up for the working people. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Next speaker is Anthony Carroll. And then we'll move on to online speaker after.
Thank you, Mayor Feng, City Council, and City Staff. My name is Anthony Carroll. I'm speaking on behalf of Carpenter's Local Two Seventeen as well today. I'd really like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council for allowing us the time to engage with the developer on this. You know, I think my colleagues covered it very well. One of the things I would like to speak to is at this meeting and at prior meetings, or specifically at prior meetings, representatives of the developer have stated that they pay prevailing wages when legally required to do so. Something that I think we all should understand and the public should understand is that the current affordable housing system allows developers to receive millions of dollars of tax-exempt funding as subsidy for these projects. And then the developers are allowed to receive that funding with no requirements to the workers on these projects. It's not possible to build affordable housing without the men and women who work on these projects. As my colleague stated before, not only do they receive tax-exempt subsidy to build, they are then, in a way, doubly subsidized by the fact that without the requirement to pay any healthcare or living wages, these workers are then reliant on social safety net programs in California. A twenty twenty-one study by the University of California, Berkeley, found that over half of residential, or excuse me, of construction worker families are reliant on some form of social safety net program. This costs the state upwards of three billion dollars per year, and that's in twenty twenty-one. We, as a union, are working day in, day out at the state, local, county level to fix these loopholes within the affordable housing funding system. But we think it is worth acknowledging at the project level like we are today that developers already get so much funding, and it's not a lot to ask for some assurances for the workers in this community and at large. So, once again, I would like to thank you, and I would like to let you know, as my colleagues have, that if you are torn on this matter, it is well within your right to allow the local electorate to vote on this. I think that further dialogue is more than necessary, and I think that, given the opportunity, the local electorate will understand the needs to stand with the hard-working men and women who build affordable housing in their community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. And moving on to online speaker, City Clerk, would you please?
The first speaker is Ann Snyder.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council, and I am sorry we didn't get this done before it landed on your plate. This is a very tricky decision. Last night, I attended a housing meeting under the NAACP, and Senator Weiner was the speaker. I, both in writing and orally, asked for help with high-speed rail and the project, the Sarah Station project. Instead, a member of the NCAA came after me in the city of Millbrae, saying we could have built affordable housing had we let La Quinta go through. Senator Weiner then avoided actually answering my question and said, ah, Millbrae is transit-rich. Yay, yay. Yeah, someday you'll get to build. My concern is you've got a deadline to get this funding in. If we say no, we will be pillared for, again, not allowing affordable housing to be built. To all the union brothers and sisters there, I hear you. I agree with you. I also asked all of you to come when I was mayor to help us with high-speed rail. I even escorted a number of you around the BART station, and you have been silent. So I would love to have you help the city with high-speed rail. But golly, council, this is a time to be tough and get this project off the table. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. I believe this is.
Thank you.
Yep, I believe this is the end of public comment on item number seven.
That's correct. There's no other speakers left.
Thank you very much. Bringing it back to the council. Does the applicant wish to address some of the comment we heard, or? Your choice.
Members of the City Council, my name is Alexis Kevorgian. See, it's just a couple of clarifications on some of the comments that were made. We are not anti-union. We are not anti-pervailing wage. I would say about fifty percent of our projects involve some kind of a wage agreement where we have to do either state prevailing wages or Davis Bacon wages. And it's not unusual for us not to, it's not unusual for us to hire unions even when there's no requirement in the subsidies that we receive. We recently constructed nine hundred units in Santa Ana, four hundred units in Garden Grove, two hundred and fifty units in Simi Valley, in which we hired union carpenters on those. And there was no state subsidy, no local subsidy that required the, that type of a hiring. We've reached out to the unions. We've had discussions with them, and we've made it clear to them that we welcome them to bid on the projects. It's a competitive process. The only other alternative, which is what they support, is for the local agencies or the state to put additional money into these projects, which effectively go to their wages. So we're not going to act as a conduit, but as our letters have indicated, if the state or the city or the feds want to contribute money so that we can take care of the unions, which will drive up the costs, those are taxpayer monies, we're willing to cooperate. But we have nothing against working with the unions, and like I said, we voluntarily use a union labor without any such restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Stick around if you can. Anyone else on this council have questions for our applicant? I have one question if you don't mind. Previously, the previous two meeting, we had a couple continuance just to provide sufficient time and opportunities for you as a project applicant to have a constructive, good-faith dialogue with the Carpenters Union. If you can give us some sense of those conversations, that would be nice.
Sure. I personally had a call with three of the members. I believe he was on the line, too, in which we made it very clear, basically, what I just stated to the council, that we are pro-union. We do work with them. I also memorialized what we discussed in that conversation, I believe, to you and the Vice Mayor. And also, I believe they had another conversation with the Pacific Companies, who is one of the sponsors of the project. And again, they are very open to it. And Pacific Companies hires hundreds of union employees a year, if not thousands, because they do a lot of prevailing wage jobs, Davis Bacon jobs, and there's no discrimination here. It's if you can live, if you can make an offer that's within the budgets that we have, then we, you know, we'll work with you. We have nothing against working with a union.
So you can confirm for the last four weeks those conversations took place? There's been positive conversations?
Yes, definitely. Well, we, the Pacific Companies had already discussed relationships and projects with them even before this project came to fruition. But I did it personally with respect to this particular project. I had a call with, there were three on the call. I memorialized exactly what we discussed, which is we do want to work together, and if they can perform, we're game.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the update. Appreciate that. Legal counsel, I believe there has been some exchange of letters. If the applicant can just kind of stick around.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just, there's plenty of chairs in the front row here. So there's been some letter being exchanged with the applicant's legal counsel and also from the Carpenters Unions. And if there is an opportunity for you to kind of give us a little bit of the, a little bit of those analysis, Reader's Digest, public-ready version, if you can, please.
Of course. Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, we have reviewed the letters that were received in public comment, and I have also had some conversations with the attorney for the Carpenters Union. And so our assessment is that while the city council does have discretion in considering approval of the Tefra bonds, such discretion may not be unlimited in light of the Housing Accountability Act, the HAA, and the Planning and Zoning Law. And so we have read those letters, the letters that came from the applicant, as well as Cal HGR and the Carpenters Union. And in large part, we do agree with the assessment of the legal risk that's been outlined in the letters by the applicant and Cal HGR. And we believe that the union's letter somehow somewhat misinterprets the HAA and the housing-related laws too narrowly and overly relies on some policy arguments. And so, given that the project, as you know, qualifies for protection under the HAA as a, not only a housing development project, but also an affordable housing development, we believe, the city attorney's office believes there is significant legal risk. That denial of the financing could potentially be considered a de facto denial of the project if it is considered based on subjective criteria under the HAA. And if that is the case, then it is likely that the applicant would file a lawsuit. In addition, as a reminder, the project is listed in the city's certified housing element, as it was previously approved under SB thirty-five. And given that it's included in the housing element, that means if it fails, it could potentially jeopardize the city's ability to meet its RENA numbers and other housing element obligations. And that could entail a potential intervention by HCD and risk decertification of the housing element, which would then implicate the builder's remedy for other future affordable housing projects. In addition, there's some risk of involvement by the Attorney General. So just in summary, based on our analysis, the council does have limited discretion in considering approval of issuance of the Tefra bonds. So based on that risk, we are recommending approval of this item.
Okay, thank you for the update. Any other questions or comment from this council? We've heard from the applicant. We've heard from the public and the Carpenters Unions. There's been, seems to have a dialogue had taken place, multiple dialogue took place, which was the intent of those extra time being given as part of the two continuance that was granted. And we've now heard the legal analysis of what's in front of us. I think it's important that this council makes a decision moving forward from here. So anyone else would like to get started?
Mr. Mayor, point of order here. It's up to the city council. You can close the public hearing, or you can keep the public hearing open at your discretion. I would recommend you close the public hearing since you've heard testimony and then have a dialogue amongst yourselves.
Okay, very well. Any other, you have a comment?
Can I make one point of clarification? The city attorney mentioned that this was approved under SB thirty-five. We re-entitled the project under a conventional entitlement. We did not use SB thirty-five.
So it's not SB thirty-five. Is it SB three thirty?
Well, we did file an SB three thirty, but that's not our entitlement. Our entitlement was a conventional entitlement where we went through CEQA. We did a CEQA.
Thank you. I mentioned SB thirty-five, just that it was, that's how it was on the housing element at the time.
I see. Okay, sorry about that.
All right, very much. So perhaps we can just close the public hearing, and then we can go back to deliberations. Do I have a motion to close public hearing? All right, so this motion is to close the public hearing on item seven. Your votes, please. There we go. All right, so hereby, the public hearing on item seven is closed. Let's bring it to the council for the decision. It's the council's pleasure. Anyone wants to make a motion? Anything? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for everyone who has come out to these meetings to speak, both in person and virtually on this topic. You know, I think there were some concerns coming into this project, into this decision about labor standards and employee healthcare and benefits. Leadership programs, which I think are very valuable programs to have on a project like this. I hope those conversations can continue going forward. I do think, however, we're sort of reaching the end of the line in terms of the council's ability to keep pushing this, keep delaying this project at this time. You know, the developer does have timelines for the bond financing, and there are, as mentioned, legal risks if this is not approved. So while I am disappointed that those agreements couldn't be made, I do encourage there to be future dialogue. I think frankly, this needs to be something addressed really at a higher level, maybe in terms of state legislation for the Tefra program to require some type of prevailing wage or some type of basic labor standards, rather than it being a project-by-project, city-by-city type of discussion. But at this time, in support of moving this ahead and approving the Tefra bonds, while hoping that those discussions. while hoping that those discussions can continue despite this council's action.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you, Mayor Fong. I also want to thank all members of the public that attended this meeting and throughout the course, the last two meetings prior to it. We heard from a lot of folks, whether it be multiple different unions, the developers themselves that have applied, or city staff for doing a great job on giving us guidance here to navigate these tricky waters. Also, many residents have come forward and business owners regarding this project. I want to be crystal clear with the public. This isn't an issue of this city council, whether or not to move the 1301 project, 1301 Broadway project ahead. This is if we are going to allow the issuance of these tax-free bonds within our jurisdiction. Most importantly, I'd like to thank former Mayor Ann Schneider for dialing in with her comment. It really resonated with me to the extent that we've had a lot that we've been through over the last about two years. And it's no secret that we've been chastised publicly, some of us that are sitting up here tonight, more than others. And as tough as this is to say, this is really a state legislature issue. And I can't fault the unions for feeling the way they feel. And I can't fault the developers for taking what's been given to them by the state legislator and executing it within the letter of the law. This project falls on a commercially zoned area at the very edge within a transit corridor. It's not very popular with a lot of the residents for parking reasons and also business for the same reason. But the developer has worked with us throughout. They didn't have to guarantee us parking spots. They were able to give us 67 parking spots, which was very much appreciated. Also, we've heard from unions like the mechanical trades, who have told us that they have jobs on this 1301 Broadway project. The last thing I want to bring forward for the council to consider is we have the looming threat of trade tariffs that are going to be coming down the pipeline in April. And I have grave concerns of how that could affect the actual job itself from a materials perspective. So, once again, thanks everyone for coming out and sharing your concerns and thoughts. I feel that Millbrae ourselves, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents here. We have a responsibility to help with the housing crisis and bear our share of the water and our housing element. We don't want to lose certification out as well. So, I'm going to yield back with those comments.
Okay. Thank you for that comments. Anyone else? Okay, so I have a couple comments. So, you know, it's, the extra few weeks as part of the continuances enable a dialogue that previously, it's proven to be beneficial, I think, at least to get some of these things flushed out and get these conversations continue, knowing some of those projects that the applicant had done in the past, were union-based, workers were able to participate. You know, whether or not this, however this conversation carry on, I'm hopeful that these opportunity will continue to exist and continue to be offered to everyone who works and lives in San Mateo County. I think it's important to say, those who built San Mateo County should have an opportunity to continue to work here and be able to live here. I think that's an important element. And sort of the spirit of this discussion, why this is important to all of us. Affordable housing is extremely important to all of us as well. I mean, this being 100% affordable, 97 units of 100% affordable housing right on transit corridor. This is an important development for the city of Millbrae and for the entire San Mateo County in order to make some progress providing affordable housing to those who may not be able to live here otherwise if these 97 units don't come out of the ground. So there need to be a balance, there need to be a consideration to all of this. And so, I think at this point, it's time for this council to make a decision. And I think 97 units of affordable housing is important to all of us. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the TAFRA bond today. And we have a second from councilmember Rinaldi. Thank you very much. Any other final comments from anyone? Okay, your votes, please.
Public hearing item number seven passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much. And thank the applicant and also the carpenter unions for this great conversations. And I'm hopeful, I'm confident these conversations will continue and look forward to these 97 units. And we're now on to item number eight. Accept the housing element annual progress report for 2024 and authorize transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research. Director Mokinson.
Good evening. This is our annual housing element progress report. We bring this to council every March. It is required to be filed to the state of California by April 1st of every year. Next slide, please. This is a state mandated annual review of the city's status and progress of implementing the housing element of the general plan. It reports the number of building permits issued for new housing production in Millbrae and progress towards meeting the regional housing needs allocation or RENA. City council is required to hold a public meeting to accept public comments on these annual reports. As I said, it has to be submitted to the state by April 1st of every year. Next slide, please. The, we are currently in the sixth cycle. Our housing element update began in May 2022. We submitted it to HCD for formal review on three occasions in October 2022, April 23, and also on February 9, 2024. Certified by HCD on March 1, 2024. Our sixth cycle housing element covers the period from 2023 to 2031. This APR, annual progress report, is the second progress report in the sixth cycle following our recently adopted housing element. Next slide, please. This is an interesting methodology. HCD requires reporting only on projects where building permits have been issued. And so, the numbers that are cited in the APR do not reflect entitled projects. They do not reflect all entitled projects. The state reporting provision skews downward the actual progress of the city's approved housing numbers. Per HCD methodology and other quirk about the state reporting, the affordability levels of accessory dwelling units are automatically allocated in the reporting as 30% very low, 30% low, 30% moderate, and 10% above moderate. And that happens whether or not the ADU is actually used by someone in those income brackets. So I want to preface that before I share the numbers for this year. Next slide. So this is our reporting. We had a total of 15 units developed in the cycle. 14 of those were accessory dwelling units. Only one was a single-family home, a brand-new single-family home, not a replacement. We don't report a replacement, tear-down rebuild. So, that sounds like a really small number, but I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And these are, again, these are residential building permits issued in 2024. Next slide. So, I want to talk about what's not in the 2024 report. So we currently have entitled 1,247 units that have not yet been issued building permits. And those include some of the biggest high-profile projects we have in our city. For example, 959 El Camino Real, their building permits were issued in 2025. So the 278-unit project will be reported in next year's annual progress report. 1301 Broadway, we had that at the prior item. Those building permits are also expected to be issued in 2025. So the 97-unit project will be reported to the state in next year's report. Other projects that have been approved, we have 488 entitled units at 150 Sarah Avenue, the Sarah Station project. That project's been approved and is pending the resolution of litigation with California High Speed Rail. Another project, the 384 units at the Best, at the 1100 El Camino Real, the Best Western down there. That project, Anton, they have submitted building plans. Those are currently under review. But again, the building permits have not been issued, so they're not in the report. So I just want to point out, it's like, well, why is the number so low in 2024? Well, they're going to be bigger in 2025 for that reason. Next slide. The other thing that we report is our housing element program implementation progress and our achievements in 2024. We report on our ongoing core programs. We have a number of core programs that we use, or that we perform through our housing services. Hip Housing is a home-sharing program that's very popular. We continue to support that. We support legal assistance and for renters and support for fair housing services through providers like Legal Aid of San Mateo County. We have Housing Mobility Services. We, as a part of our housing element, we hosted two housing workshops this year. One was with developers and other was with our local nonprofit housing service providers. We held those in May and June, May and June of this year. So, we have a dialogue that we keep with these builders and these service providers to see where the trends are and how we can respond to their needs. Very interesting meeting, I can say, for this past year. The new item on the agenda for both parties was the impact of the cost of insurance, which is something new that we're facing as far as housing affordability. We also, as a part of the housing element, to implement that, we prepared inclusionary housing and density bonus studies. You may remember that from the January meeting. Those were prepared in 2024. We held the study session on January 28. To report back, we do have two workshops scheduled in April from the council's direction. We're currently organizing those for property owners and developers. And we also are supported by, our housing program is supported by part-time housing staff from HART. We partner with them for part-time assistance, because we do not have any full-time housing staff here in the city of Millbrae. Next slide, please. And so with that, we recommend that the council receive any public comments and accept by motion the housing element annual progress report for 2024 and authorize transmittal to the state of California. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Director. Questions and comments? Questions from this council, please. Anyone? Councilmember Nguyen.
So I just want to get a sense of how we're tracking to 2031 and kind of like the pacing that we need to be able to meet to get to that point. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, definitely 2024 is a slow year, but 2025 is going to be a really good year for housing production in Millbrae. We already have, obviously, 959, I'm sorry, 959 El Camino under construction right now. That's very exciting. So, we do, it's going to be quite a bit different from this current, from this prior year.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. In terms of the Anton project, is that, is there any new? You mentioned that there are building permits that are under review currently, or is that basically what happened five years ago?
No, the building permits are under review. They last submitted in December.
Okay, so it is still an active?
Yeah, it's an active.
Active project at this time, okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Nobody else? Okay, all right. I don't believe we have any public comment on this item.
There's no public speakers cards and also no hand raised on lines, Mayor.
Okay, very well. All right, bring it back. Any final comment? I think we need to make a motion to accept this report and have it transmitted to the governor's office and the HCD. All right, we have a motion from councilmember Nguyen and a second from councilmember Riley. Any final comments? Your votes, please. There we go.
Item number eight passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much and well done. Director Mokinson. All right. And we have a last item for the evening, which is item nine. Accept the fiscal year '24 to '25 mid-year budget report and adopt a resolution amending the 2024 to '25 adopted budget. We have a director, Mike Sung.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council. Today, we're going to talk about the mid-year fiscal update for fiscal year '24, '25. Next slide, please. So, just to get right into the meat of it, our general fund revenues and expenditures. For our revenues, adjustments are recommended. The city received a combination of one-time grants and reimbursements. Bayside Manor, Caltrans, basketball court for Taylor Middle School. And generally, revenues have performed as anticipated. I'll talk a little bit more about vehicle license and fees in one of the future slides as I go through some of the numbers there. Also, on the expenditure side, we're recommending some adjustments. They're basically commensurate with the increases in the grant and reimbursement revenues that we have received. Next slide, please. So, here are the general fund revenues and adjustments. The big thing that you'll notice is the property tax in itself, and that's actually receiving in the additional amounts from the state. Into a little bit more about that, but basically, what happens is there's an amount that's allocated every year. And then the state takes a look at this basic aid formula, and then it takes about 14 months for it to come back and give us an allocation. So, we're waiting on the fiscal year '23, '24 money. That actually should come in in August and it's accrued around that time period. But if you go all the way down, you'll see that in total, we're actually asking to amend the fiscal year adopted budget by about $2 million upwards. So, with encumbrance reserves, we're moving from 42.4 to 44.4 million in revenues. Next slide, please.
Mr. Sung, sorry, if I can just go back a little bit. So, the $1.5 million increase in property tax, that's actually VLF, or?
That's VLF.
Okay. I just want to confirm that to folks. All right, thank you.
There's that $800,000 that I mentioned about the grants and intergovernmental. That's the additional one-time grants and reimbursements we received.
All right, sounds good.
Next slide, please.
Thank you.
On the expenditure side, the adjustments that we're really looking at are for public works and parks. That's $700,000 and $100,000. That totals $800,000. That's equal to the commensurate to the one-time grants that we've had. We also have an additional transfer out amount of about $140,000 for the licenses as well. In total, we're looking at an increase with encumbrances from 42.9 million to 43.8 million for expenditures. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned before, we're assuming the property tax and new vehicle license fee funding is going to come in on, in August. It has been for the last 20 years. The state's generally pretty slow with it, but they have paid for that. Calpers, the UAL costs are actually going to go up next year because we had a lower-than-anticipated return. The discount rate for calpers is 6.8%. We received a 5.8% return back in '22, '23. It takes two years for it to take effect. So the next year, in '25, '26, you'll see a slightly higher increase. But that'll go back down again in '26, '27, because we received about a 9.3% return in '23, '24. '24, '25 is still yet to be seen, so we don't have any information on that yet, since we're still in the middle of that. Next slide, please. Okay. Onto the other funds. The only real adjustments we're recommending is to increase revenues and expenditures by $70,000 for the recreation fund. And basically, it's good news. We have more demand for recreation classes and the commensurate increase or expenditure increase is offset by the revenues that we receive and its cost recovery for that. On the other funds, they're all tracking within the budgeted frames and even a little bit lower in some of them, but for expenditures. But for revenues, they're tracking pretty much on target. Next slide, please. Other actions. So, we're also recommending an reorganization of the chief building official position. This approximate cost for about one and a half months is $30,000. And this will be offset with a decrease in expenditures in the community development department. Like to just note that the reduction is in contract costs from an outside company, so that's how the offset will be made. Also, portion of the position will be cost-recoverable. Also, in addition of the part-time code enforcement inspector contract position for additional enforcement activities, the approximate cost for this three months is $27,000. And the savings in the community development department will offset that cost as well. Next slide. And with that, the action to take would be to receive the fiscal year '24, '25 budget update and adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year '24, '25 budget as shown on attachment one, exhibit A. Open to any questions?
All right. Thank you very much for the update, Director Sung. Senior Manager, you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, maybe Mike, if you go back to the two spreadsheets.
Sure.
Revenues and expenditures. I always like to add up for the council and the public. Just in summary, we've got 44.4 million in revenue. If you go to the next slide, the 43.8 million, so we have a little over 700,000. If you go to the next slide, the 43.8 million, so we have a little over 700,000 in balance that we will bring forward for this fiscal year. So we're tracking exceptionally well.
Very well, and increasing our reserve a little bit. All right, so keeping us financially sound and healthy and have a balanced budget, which is extremely important for us. That's good to have. All right, questions from this council? Could you elaborate a little bit more on the chief building official expenditure there? I saw that there's a month and a half and a $30,000. So is it, a little bit more in the background would be helpful.
For the chief building officials, so one and a half months, if we anticipated having a chief building official start approximately around the middle of May, the anticipated cost is about 30,000 for that.
Okay, so and then next year, we'll be rolling into the next year's budget, correct?
That is correct. And I should note that that is, that is the total compensation cost. So as we bring in employees, so that's not salary, that's salary benefits, cost, so all-inclusive.
Excellent, so that would be in lieu of the current model, which is WC3, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Yep, okay, sounds good. All right. Any other final questions from this?
So if we go back to the slide with the sales tax, I forgot which one it was. So the sales tax looks flat, right? Do you have any concerns about that and, you know, maybe just kind of walk us through what we could potentially do to help with that situation?
So the sales tax in the county has been pretty flat, actually, across, and it's anticipated to go back up during the next couple of years. We talked to our consultant, who actually happens to be the consultant for most of the county as well. Is tracking a little bit low at the beginning of the year, but fourth quarter actually made up quite a bit in the cleanup payments that we just received back in the end of February. It's tracking pretty much on target right now for the sales tax for this year, but it's been relatively flat, and it's a county-wide thing. It's not just us. Across San Mateo, I believe, actually, in Santa Clara, it's pretty similar as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. You mentioned the calpers unfunded liability is expected to increase temporarily and then go down a little bit in the coming years?
Yes.
What's the current annual payment and can you give approximate numbers?
So calpers, I believe the approximate payments are about 1.9 million for fire, 1.5 million for police, and I want to say about 4.6 million for miscellaneous. That's all funds.
Okay.
So it would go up because of the 5.8% return, which was less than the 6.8% return that's anticipated for next year. This year, it's already calculated out, and this year was especially high because we had a negative return of about 6.1% back for 21, 22. This was after the really great return we had in 2021, which was about 21.3%, which actually lowered the cost as well. Seesaws a little bit, but it stabilizes. So the 9.3% return will help stabilize the increase and actually go back down a little bit.
Okay, so the roughly, you said the total's about 8 million between those three funds, and that's, that's with the increases or that's before those increases?
With the increases, it's pretty close to that. It's a little bit more than that.
Okay.
Generally about that much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sung, as far as the business tax, you know, for businesses that registers with us within the city and with the new life signs coming in, do you have any anticipation on any changes to that?
I think business tax has been fairly stable. It's been coming in just about at, maybe a little bit slightly below, but it's also been offset by property transfer tax and state vehicle motor fee as well. So from our other taxes standpoint, it's pretty much tracking around target.
Do you expect any increases as businesses starting to move in and then as we complete some of the life science projects?
As we see more businesses coming in, we'll kind of have a better idea at that point, but if we're having more businesses, obviously it'll have a good effect on the business.
That'll be nice to have, right? All right, so any other questions from this council before I start taking public comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Riley.
Do we get any sales tax for those festivals in our city? The festival, one of the festivals and those festivals?
Generally speaking, for a sales tax, if something happens inside a city and it's a taxable, consumable good, the sales tax is actually split up among a variety of different options. 6% goes to the state, approximately 1% goes to the county, 1% to the city, and about 1.375% to the transit agencies here in San Mateo County. So if they're assessing sales tax, portion should go back to the city, about 1% out of the 9.375% we have right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, how about we take some public comment and then we can come back? City clerk, would you please?
Online speaker, we have Ann Snyder.
Yeah, and thank you, and sorry, I don't plan on being at every council meeting. City council members, most of you are new. Most of you will not realize that it took seven years to get a tree ordinance, but along with that tree ordinance was a program, a process within the city that people could both replace the urban forest that we have lost and/or on their own or with support of city staff. That program did not get established last year since it took an extra five or six months to even get the second reading on the council agenda. This is your chance to look at very critical climate resiliency programs. Our entire east side neighborhoods, east of El Camino Real, are at high risk for heat exposure. New data has just been released on how sensitive seniors are to homes that get overheated. Trees will help cool that. The other item that has been in the newspaper last week is the fact that much more of Millbrae, especially District 5, 4, and 1 are high risk of fire now. And that leaves out the fact that the Cappuccino and Lamita Park neighborhood should also be on high risk on that map. We have not done disaster preparedness workshop since November 2019. It is well past time to bring the residents together and get their houses fire-safe, their go-kits ready, their insurance straightened. I've heard this week of multiple people who've lost their fire insurance in Millbrae. I would encourage you to use this slight budget increase, this is the biggest in my whole time at 44 million, to spend some time doing disaster prep, both heat waves and fires on that. Thank you.
Mayor, there are those other speakers in chamber and also online.
Thank you so much. Closing public comment on item number nine. Bring it back to the council. Any final comments? Questions, suggestions? Councilmember Nguyen.
Do you foresee any, like, big increases in expenses going forward, just so we can kind of plan in advance? Do you see any of that?
That's kind of hard to say. I mean, it really is dependent probably on what the economy really looks like. If the economy continues to be strong, then generally speaking, you're probably looking at things going up at pretty close to the pace that would be, but if the economy does go a different direction, then I think we'll need to take a closer look.
Like, for example, increase in water costs? Do you foresee anything, any increases in expenses because of that?
So for water costs, I believe we're going to bring that back to the council. We're working right now with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other final comments? Take a motion? We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Your votes, please. Ready? Okay.
Item number nine passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much, and we have another balanced budget, which is important. All right, takes us to council comment. Who would like to go first? Anybody? Any volunteers? There we go. Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for all of you stay later with us. I just want to share with you, we're going to have night market this Friday from the four to 10 PM. Bring your family and friends coming join you with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and just to clarify, I believe that's at the Gateway Pride Development, yes, the night market. Yes. Okay, yeah, just one comment. I attended the commute.org board meeting a couple weeks ago, and there was a discussion of upcoming shuttle routes and call for projects, new funding cycle. Didn't hear the results of that, but hopefully the majority of those were funded. There's been some changes to some of the shuttle routes over the last couple of years with certain corporate partners pulling out, saying they don't want to be part of the program anymore, so kind of need to improvise and change that as it's going on. But overall, good meeting and hope to have some more, hope that it was a success in terms of the shuttle funding. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Councilmember Nguyen.
So been pretty uneventful for the last week, but I do have upcoming meetings for the RMCP. I think it's Committee of the CCG, and that stands for Resource Management Climate Protection. So I'm looking forward to working everyone on that committee as well as with the Caltrain Committee with Millbrae. So those are my two upcoming committee meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Rinaldi.
Thanks, Mayor Fung. It's been a very exciting couple of weeks over here within city Millbrae and District 1 in particular. Been really, really busy behind the scenes and had a lot of residents asking questions regarding updates around public works in District 1. So just want to provide some quick transparency on some long-term outstanding projects that I've been working with our public works department and city manager to accomplish. First one, starting with Banbury Lane repaving project. Our next steps are to get quotes out in April. We started this project back in December evaluating it. Also, at that same time, right around the corner on Ridgewood, we started a traffic calming project where we had a speed trailer out there, which you may have noticed a couple times. So unfortunately, the speed trailer broke down the first time, and we had to bring it back out after it got serviced and repaired. Second time, to get an accurate count of data. What that means is a speed cushion will probably be coming around that area fairly soon. Don't have an exact ETA, but we're getting towards that stage when it will be installed. And I know that's a request that a lot of residents in that area were looking forward to. Also, wanted to touch on the safe routes of school, which was mentioned earlier. I had the privilege of sitting in on a meeting with the principal of Green Hills, a resident and as well as some city staff outlining the plans of what we were going to do around Laurel and Helen regarding traffic calming. So really excited for that. And then last but not least, the big, big reveal. Elaine, if you wouldn't mind bringing it up. I had the privilege of being certified for CERT, Community Emergency Response Team by yours truly, Mayor Anders Fung, with our city manager in attendance. Really proud moment, and I want to encourage all residents to join in on the program. Not only will you get your certification from our mayor, which I got to say, that was a nice touch. There were other residents from Burlingame, Hillsborough, and San Mateo that were incredibly jealous that they didn't get that. You will also get a fancy lapel such as this that'll tell everyone that you are CERT certified. And most importantly, they have a next meeting that's coming up, April 1st. Can you go to the next slide, Elaine? And it's for our Mandarin speakers. So I highly encourage anyone that speaks Mandarin or that wants to participate, especially on our city council, reach out to CCFD. Here's your opportunity to be more engaged, be CERT certified, so that way you can help your neighbors, yourself, and your family and loved ones. So thanks so much for a very special afternoon with CERT. That's it.
Thank you for the comment, and it was wonderful to see not only our own council members, but, you know, members within our own community stepping up to help, you know, in case of a disaster happen. Hopefully, it never had to happen, never had to need it, but it's also nice to know that our own community are stepping up and help those in need should the need arises and kind of going through this training. It's really about Millbrae folks helping out Millbrae, and that's what warming about this whole CERT thing. So thank you so much for participation there, Councilmember Rinaldi. On the TA meeting, Transportation Authority has been, I think some of you already have read that in the paper, which relatively difficult meeting to have last Thursday. I think it's needless to say that the cost of doing gray separation has just continued to balloon. And now with the tariffs, hopefully, we'll still, we'll stay within 25%. Maybe hopefully, you know, we can walk back on that on the Canadian aluminum and steel. We were looking at 50% earlier today, although we kind of walked back on that a little bit. Hopefully, you know, hopefully, we can finally move in some positive direction here, but it just goes to show how difficult it is with some of the things that are happening at a federal government and then how it continue to contributes to the difficulties of getting these gray separations done. I still remember back in the days when Millbrae did our gray separation back in 1996. It was 28 million, thereabout, I think it was. And right now, Burlingame Broadway is looking at $899 million price tag. Look at what 20-some years has done to the inflations on this. And now they're even looking at, hopefully, finding way to fund a gray separation project without a station at Broadway, which would eliminate some of their opportunity to do transit-oriented development and housing. So and then there are also a couple of other gray separation projects, one in Mellow Park, one in a conjunction project between San Bruno and South San Francisco, hopefully around Linden area to try to get it done. But it's just, it's just getting more and more challenging as we move forward. Also, start looking at the, continue, I shouldn't say start, continue looking at different county measures to help with the funding gap or the fiscal cliff of BART. You know, MTC is looking at a half-cent sales tax for, I think, 10 or 15 years, but yet still not having a representation on the BART Board of Directors, which, you know, from my personal opinion, as a board member on TA, I've been advocating that if we were to tax ourselves to support BART, there need to be equitable representation on the BART Board in order to make sure to hold them accountable so that the money will be well-spent. So more to come on this four-county measure to help the transit agencies. And that's my report out on council comment. If no one else have any further comments, I can adjourn this meeting tonight at 9:05 PM. Thank you all.